It was 5:30. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Nice and quiet. It is 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Lynn, can you help me with doing that with a roll call, please?
Amy Gorbyschek?
Present.
Pam Horn?
Present.
Jody Lundquist?
Present.
Kenner Reeder?
Here.
Tim Warner?
Present.
Laura Alderman?
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just. Liberty and justice for all.
Fellow trustees, do you have any changes, additions, deletions, rearrangements to our agenda? Okay, with that, we are going to dive into what we have as a busy and informative agenda. And we're going to start with our strategic focus. And we're going to start with having one of our students come to the podium, talk to us about our mission and values in action. And Aiden McHugh from our Marine Technology Society is here. Aiden, there you are, my friend. Welcome to the podium. Welcome to this board meeting. We're proud to have you as a student and anxious to hear what you are doing to put our mission and vision and values to action.
Thank you. I just want to talk to you guys a little bit today about community and inclusion on campus and how the Marine Technology Society contributes to that. So as you know, I'm the president of the Marine Technology Society on campus. We have about 20 to 30 active members. And we also recently had the opportunity to send some students to the Oceans 2025 Conference in Chicago, Illinois. The Marine Technology Society here on campus is a very tight-knit community. That's kind of what I've set it up to be in the last two years of my presidency, is not as much a space for academics. Yes, it's a space for academics, of course. But I also wanted to give students an opportunity to network with each other, get to know each other outside of the classroom and that kind of stuff. So I had won a scholarship through the Marine Technologies Society, which is the larger overarching organization that our club is housed under. And the scholarship was the EMERGE program. It is a year-long program where I'm paired with a mentor. And then part of the program is that I also get to travel to that Oceans Conference. Myself and another student, Namath Kennedy, won that scholarship. And one day, I went into my boss's, our director's office, John Luchko, and I was like, you know, I'd really like to see some more students from our club be able to go to this conference. And so him and I kind of brainstormed ideas. And what we did is we put together a pitch of $3,700 to send three more students to the Oceans 2025 Conference. We got that money, and then we were all able to send three more students to the conference, and they had a great time. And then there was also a large number of other students who were able to go just from dividends of registration fees. They covered hotels. They covered home meals. But we were able to register for them. I believe that this action reflects upon community and inclusion because we are able to look at our community of Marine Technology Society members. And I was very excited for those students to have the opportunity to grow not only professionally, but also as people. Dan Fulmer, who's a good friend of mine, he is graduating this year with myself. And he had the opportunity to speak with Dave Neff, who is the Vice President of Hydro Survey at Wolpert. And through that conversation, he is now looking at starting a job with them. Without the EMERGE program, without the grant, without the Marine Technology Society's help, he would not have had this opportunity. And so he really experienced community. He experienced inclusion here on campus when he showed up. He showed up with his daughter before. He is a father, and he still has time to come to the meetings. And so he's been accepted. He's been cared by the other club members. And now, because of this travel, he may even have a job to go on. Yeah, that's what I got for you.
Well, that's a lot of really good information. Is there, are there any comments or questions? Go ahead, Kenner.
What do you see yourself doing five years from now?
Five years from now, I'm hoping to do hydro survey-related operations. So with the construction of the Freshwater Research Innovation Center, a lot of companies will be moving into that building. One company in specific is NV5, who are formerly a geodynamics company. And they are starting hydro survey here on the Great Lakes. And I'd really like to be included in that. And so that's where I'm hoping to go after this.
Thank you.
Aiden, in our mission, it says that we want to enrich lives and transform lives and enrich our communities. And so everything that you just described definitely has done that. You talk about your friend and transformation in his life, and all of this contributes back to our community. So what an honor it is to have you as a student of NMC. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, and we will move on. And speaking of mission and vision and values, let's learn more about our updated strategic plan by Mr. Jason Slade, who's making his way to the podium. Hello, Jason.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, trustees. Thank you very much for having me today. Hats off to Aiden. I knew Aiden when he was a dual-enrolled student here, and I was proud to see his success here at the college. And actually, the themes that he talked about with connectiveness, employability, and others are things that we are seeing bubble up with many of our focus groups around the strategic plan. Most recently, AVP Fairbanks and I met with the SGA, or Student Government Association. And in particular, they were talking about looking at connectiveness and how are they connected to the college. And it's tough. Like, I give Aiden credit keeping that MTS group alive and more than alive thriving with those EMERGE scholarships because we are an institution that has many two-year-related programs. And to keep students engaged throughout those two years, knowing that they cycle off quickly, is something that our student groups and our student life is working on. And so this leads in directly to the STRAP plan development. We're currently launching the objectives phase. So in this room, last Friday, we had our Leadership Council. And remember, our Leadership Council is our, you could look at them as the leads of our department, our faculty leads, our chairs, individual directors, and others. And those are the ones that are doing, will do a lot of work on this strategic plan at an objective level. And so we had a brainstorming session two weeks ago and then really jumped into the specifics last Friday. So we're starting to get those initial, I would say, SMART goals, but we're really not at the SMART stage yet. We're kind of at that big-picture stage. And so a couple of things for the board to be aware of. If you recall last board update in September, I said, you know, we're kind of really starting to finesse some of these strategies. Well, I'm able to kind of give better updates right now. So currently with the strategic plan, we have two impact statements. If you recall, this is what I would consider our elevator pitch. It aligns our mission and vision to the actual strategies of the plan. And I often think about this as trustees. If you were asked by a stakeholder, if you were asked by an industry partner or an organization, hey, give me just the high level of the strategic plan. What would you do? And same thing, what would I do? And so Diane and I are working on revisions to this. But this will be something that, as we develop the strategies, we'll continue to edit and revise and probably condense it a little bit. From an elevator pitch standpoint, it's still a little long. But really, the goal is to share with the community what we're doing with our regional programs, what we're doing with our nationally-aligned programs, and then how are we making that pathway or that entrance into NMC our systems as easy as possible. And so we'll continue to refine that. And this is something I'll probably have a cleaner version for when we meet on November 5th for our Board Study Session. What these lead to is our strategies. And so if you go back to September, these were lengthier before. And feedback from our Leadership Council, from our Planning Committee, from ESINT, which is our department chairs, university partners, and others was, you got to tighten those up a little bit. And so we've been doing that, taking that future-focused education theme and really trying to frame it around equipping our learners with what they need in this rapidly-changing world, looking at experiential learning and those durable skills. Our enrollment and student success strategies, now that we want to bring new students to the campus, but how do we allow them to be successful here and retain them throughout that process? And then our vibrant campus and colleagues, looking at not only our facilities aspect, what do we need from an infrastructure standpoint, but what do we need from a cultural standpoint as we talk about connectedness for our students and even for our faculty and staff on there? And again, I think we are continuing to refine our strategic drivers on there. We've kind of let these just sit as is. And then we continue to get feedback from the Foundation Board, from others, about refinement that we can do. And we know that, and we will refine those. But right now, we're kind of letting those sit out there as we look at these objectives through that brand lens. You know, all that work that we did around our distinguished programs, around being a culture of innovation, et cetera. Our community partnerships, which we heard loud and clear from the board, which was critical. As we had those objectives, we actually have individuals that are responsible for aligning those with those community partnerships. And then our work over the next couple of weeks will be to continue to gather that feedback. We had a strong community session, Leadership Council, like I said, our students groups. We met with a faculty association. We meet with our staff association next Friday and continue to refine the language and the strategies. But more importantly, start to bubble up those most critical objectives, really through the lens that the board gave us of like, how are these the most impactful? How will these lead to the greatest change? And why should these be our priorities over the next three years? And so I'm comfortable with where we're at in terms of the process. And my goals for our Board of Trustees Study Session in November, which is just a few weeks away, would be to share those preliminary objectives with you so you can see kind of where we're going. They might not be in the SMART format yet, but they'll be heading down that pathway with some early data sets and really those clear objectives that we want to have foster each one of those strategies.
Great update. What questions, comments do you have for Jason? Go ahead, Mark.
Jason, how's it going with the community feedback? Do we have a lot of interest from the community so far in the strategic plan?
So we're getting feedback from lots of different touchpoints. So I'm hearing it from focus groups. So for instance, I was with the Business Advisory Board on Friday, and I kind of derailed their whole meeting. We started talking about the STRAP plan and AI and how do we like prepare students and how do we prepare our own community and et cetera. And so that provided some really good initial feedback around that strategy. Our community session had some good feedback as well, looking at it through a little bit different lens. Many of them were neighbors around here. They use the campus for learning, but also for connection back to the community. So they were getting towards mentorships in our facilities and things like that. And so that was a strong session. We have our ongoing internal survey that we're getting feedback from our local NMC departments. And then a broader one that's open-ended that we're getting community feedback as well that's looking at alignment with maybe some specifics, where they talk about a specific pathway or have we looked at this program or this partnership on there? And I expect more of those. I'm with the CIT Advisory Board this week. I was surveying also last week. And then we're bringing together some key, I would call them organizations and business partners and others, things like Travers Connect and The Grove to dig down more into that. So we're getting at from a few different touchpoints right now. I'd say so far, everybody agrees with the strategy idea. I think it becomes a little harder as we're getting to those objectives. Like, what do you mean? What do those look like? Can you give us some examples of what you've been doing?
What other questions, comments? Well, one of the things that, when I read through this and even graphically, when I look at this updated strategic plan, I'm starting to really feel the collaboration between Diana and yourself, you know, to call out people, but also just to say communications and strategy coming together has really been proving that that was a really good decision that Nick made to bring these two areas together because I really see a positive difference in this particular strategic plan, not just in the graphics, but in the content and how it's communicated. So, well done, both of you.
And hats off to her. And I think we have been very, we benefited greatly from her going through that process with Staymates as we did a lot of the brand strategy work. There was a lot of really good lessons learned that we've been able to incorporate this. And then kind of as she looks at alignment between our strategies, it's been really strong.
Great. And so to trustees, remember at this November Study Session, that's our final point of input. So, right?
We might, I think we might have some room for additional one. Lynn, didn't we save an additional date?
We have an additional date later in November, just depending on how the conversation on the fifth occurs. And of course, voting time is the November regular meeting.
Great. You guys are always thinking ahead. Outstanding. So we have possibly a couple of points for continued board input if you have other questions after today. Couple platforms coming up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, moving on into our reports and presentations, we now are joined by Barbara and Stephanie with Andrews Hooper Pavlik, otherwise known as AHP. And welcome you to the podium. May I just quickly say before you get started, you're welcome to come on up.
She's going to work for the presentation, so I'll just kind of say hi.
Okay. Great, thank you. And so just to my fellow trustees, to remind you that after this presentation, the ladies from AHP are going to be departing. So make sure that if you have questions, they're asked at this point while they're here because then when it comes up for an action item where we have to approve it, we will not have them here for questions within the discussion. So just keep that in mind as you're listening to the report. Now is the time for questions. Okay, take it away. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I'm Barb Garza. I'm the Senior Manager in charge of the audit. And Stephanie Cleaver is the Partner on the Audit as well. So let us know if there's any questions. Definitely chime in during the presentation, and we can address things as we go through them. But just want to start with a thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to work with the college and to be here today. So today, I plan to go through the audit results, the required communications that are in the reports that you received along with some financial highlights. We've met with the committee and management and gone through these items in detail. So right now, the discussion is very high-level. So just let me know if there's any questions or you want any clarification on any items. So going into the audit results. So this slide here highlights some of the key pieces of the audit results. The big positive that I want to shout out here is that it's clean, unmodified opinion, which is the best that you can get. Very positive results overall. There were no material misstatements in the financial statements, no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses on a control standpoint. So all really positive results there. On the right side, there were some immaterial, uncorrected items. The key piece to take away from those three is that collectively, they are not significant to your financial statements, which is why they were left uncorrected. The slide kind of summarizes each of the individual instances, but the net effect of all three on the net position for the college is $24,000, which is pretty minor overall when you think of the size and scale of a college. The next piece I want to highlight is that we are engaged to complete a single audit, which is an audit that's completed over your federal funds. At this time, our audit for the federal funds is not complete. This is largely due to the compliance supplement delay. So that is the guidance that the federal government issues and tells us how we complete our audit procedures. Typically, that's released in May, and it has not been released yet. So we are unable to complete the June 30 single audit until that is released. But I have listed on this slide the three programs that we are testing, which is Student Financial Aid, which is typically tested in the single audit for the college, along with funds that came through the U.S. Maritime Marine Academy and then along with some of the COVID funding that was still being spent during the year. So going into the required communications. So these are communications that are summarized in some of the reports that you receive. For this, I just want to mention that we understand that our role as your auditors is to report to you as the board. We've got a great working relationship with management. They were great to work with through the audit process, and we really appreciate all of their help. But we do understand if items do come up of any concern, we would bring them to the board and to the audit committee. So we did talk with the Audit Committee in detail about the audit results and everything. And like I said, all of our required communications are all in the affirmative and positive results. This slide also lists out your sensitive estimates and disclosures, which are in your financial statements. There were a couple of audit standards, or I guess with one of them, it was just a change in guidance from NACUBO, which is one of the college guidance for how to record certain items. So there were a couple of items that were implemented during the year. They did not have a significant impact on your financial statements. Well, the GASB 101 compensated absences did not have a significant impact. The NACUBO guidance changed how the student tuition fees and scholarship allowances calculated. So that just takes the expense side of grants and awards that are in expense to the college and nets it against the related tuition revenue. So the estimate for that on where those costs are being presented just changed by, it was about a $7 million impact on the current year calculation because of the guidance from NACUBO. So impact to your net position is zero. It's just where it's being presented. So it looks, it makes an appearance of a decrease in your net tuition. And you'll see that when we get into the financial highlights. I'll note that on the revenue side. There are two other standards coming up for fiscal year '26 that we'll work with management on implementation, but that's GASB 103 and GASB 104. And we'll work with management as we go through next year's audit and in preparation of that to implement those standards. So jumping into the financial highlights, this slide here summarizes the assets for the year. For 2022, the assets were $152 million. And you can see here on the left side with the 2025 breakout. And then on the right side is the 2024 breakout. The overall proportions of your revenues or assets are about the same. Some of the key highlights in the fluctuation are that cash, that lighter red first column, and investments, the lighter blue. Collectively, the two together are up about $8 million. There was stronger market performance along with some of the bond proceeds that were still held in the cash and investment portfolio waiting to be spent on the upcoming construction projects. Capital assets is your dark red tall pillar there, and that one is up $7 million. And that's related to some of the aviation projects along with some aircrafts that were purchased during the year. The gray column, you can see, is a $5 million increase related to your OPEB asset. That has to do with the retirement plan with the state. And the asset is really just driven by the change in the expected market performance versus the actual market performance. So that's been an asset the last two years. Previously, it was historically a liability. But that, with the market performance, that was higher and generated about a $5 million increase there in the OPEB asset. On the liability side, you can see the significant increase. Sorry, this is liabilities and net position. So this is, once again, on the left, your 2025 results. And on the right, your 2024 results. Your notable liability fluctuations are accounts payable. That lighter red section was up about $1.5 million, driven by the construction work that's in process. And then long-term obligations, that darker red column is related to the new bond that was issued in 2024, sorry, 2025. Net position as a whole is up about $14.6 million. That's your blue pillar there at the end. And for the drivers for that, I think looking at the revenues and expenses will be a better visual there. So this slide here looks at your revenues and expenses and change in that position. So in other words, kind of your income statement. So looking at that, you can see proportionately, really, everything is pretty consistent. The shift year-over-year, but there's little shifts year-over-year, but overall, pretty consistent. The biggest takeaway from this is that the change in that position, the gray column, is essentially your profit for the year. So with 2024 being at $19.4 million and 2025 at $14.6 million. And once again, the next few slides, when we go into the revenue and expense detail, will kind of shed light on some of the drivers there. So on the revenue side, you can see here that there are quite a few shifts. Overall, proportionally, pretty consistent on what's the highest, but things kind of leveled out there. And this is where you can really see in that first red column, that's your tuition and fee revenue. And that's where that net of that estimate really impacted. So it brought more expenses up to net against these revenues. No impact to the net position, but just drives that revenue number down. There's also a $1.3 million decrease in your blue column for the state appropriations. There were some one-time items in 2024 that drove that number up. The darker red for the grants is up about $4 million, and that was driven just by the mix of federal and state aid that came in. The ERC is your black pillar there at the end. That is the Employee Retention Credit. So that was filed for on the deadline, right at the deadline last year. So there's no more credits that you're able to apply for. So there was an $8 million revenue last year that drops down significantly this year for the interest since that's still open as a receivable. On the expense side, this slide here once again shows really pretty consistent proportions overall. Total expenses were $62.9 million for 2025. This is a $3.1 million decrease over the prior year. The biggest areas are $1.3 million in instruction, which is the lighter red column, that first one, and that decrease from the OPEB asset being generated. So just related to employee benefits there. And then $3.6 million in a decrease in the student services by, driven by more expenses being net against the tuition and fees. So overall proportions here in the expenses and the area where the college's expenses are being allocated are really pretty consistent year-over-year. So that is all that I had. Any questions from the board?
Go ahead, Kenner.
First of all, I want to say to our external auditors, I appreciate the fact that we have open and frequent communication with the Audit Committee throughout the audit, which is as it should be because you, as external auditors, actually report to the board, not to the college. And what you do is help us carry out our role of protecting the assets of the college. You do not guarantee the accuracy of statements. What you do, as you say, with a good statistical sample, you did not find material items that needed to be corrected. Would you explain for the benefit of the board what you mean by material?
Yeah, so in an audit, you take kind of a risk-based look at items. So you consider what the users of the financial statement would consider significant to the financials. And that helps you kind of develop a material level. So we look at overall, will, if something was misstated or incorrect, would it impact those who are making decisions using the financial statements?
Thank you. What other questions, Andy?
Based on your analysis and where you've been, us being in our seats here, what would you tell us is the main thing that we should concern about?
I think that one I might defer to Stephanie.
So yeah, overall, as she went through the results, you can see that there were no audit adjustments that we proposed, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. So overall, you should feel really good about how things are operating. We do a lot of detailed testing, especially being in the first year. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into the audit and us looking at controls in place and all of that. So overall, yeah, you should feel good about how things are being done and accounted for.
But you do a number of other schools. That was one of the reasons why we actually looked at your organization. What do you see as one thing that's a little different with us that we should concern? I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying, if there's something we should watch in the future, what would that one thing be in mind?
I mean, overall, it's always when you're getting into new areas, new grants, new funding sources, you know, making sure you're fully understanding what those funds are to be used for and how those can be tracked. So just making sure that as new sources come in and those are being awarded, that you're comfortable with how the controls are in place over those funds and that they're being handled appropriately. And again, during our testing, we did not note any issues. But yeah, I do think, just with the growth and all of that that you're seeing, that would be something to focus on.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Well, like I said, this is the time to bring them up because when we go to approve it for discussion, we will not have both Barb and Stephanie here. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate this first year with you. We do feel very confident. We have, as you learned, we have a strong team that leads. We do feel very confident. We have, as you learned, we have a strong team that leads this, led by Troy. And so we've always appreciated that oversight for us, and you've helped us prove that we are in good standing. So thank you. Appreciate your time. Okay, and now we have our faculty report, which we are excited to hear about biomedical engineering technology, which is going to be brought to us by Joe Dieter, our instructor in this area. Joe, we appreciate you being here. We've seen the presentation and looking forward to you bringing it to life.
Thank you. Folks in the back said I should probably show everybody this. This was the award that I won this year for Biomed of the Year, national representation from our governing body, AAMI and GE Healthcare. So I was voted and won this award nationally, so.
Keep that up there. That's worth the brag, Joe. Keep that up there.
It still, it still doesn't feel right.
It should. Well, congratulations. We may talk a little bit more about that later, but we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Neil, for the opportunity to present you probably a rather unfamiliar career field to most everybody in here. We have been voted for the second time in 10 years by U.S. News as one of the top five jobs in America that you've probably never heard of. So we're trying to change that. That's not a list you want to be on multiple years for. So what is biomedical engineering technologies? Most people have heard of biomedical engineering. We're not those. We're on the other end. We take care of, maintain, assess, and preventative maintenance all the medical equipment within hospitals. This would include anything from your doctor's offices, manual blood pressure cuffs, to radiology, x-ray, CT, MRI, anesthesia, an OR, laboratory equipment, and everything in between in the hospital. So if you've been in a hospital for any type of situation, what you were attached to for your vital signs or anything else, biomed has a hand in keeping that going. So, pretty important. The present in technology, we're moving as fast as computers are moving. Everything in medical is cutting-edge. But then again, we may be thrown again up against something that's from 2000 and an hour after we worked on something that's brand-new, that's been brought in. So it varies. We have to have a vast knowledge of what's going on. The future in technology and medical, as I said, is rapidly moving. We are moving into AI already in the hospital. And I'm not just talking ChatGPT or things like that. We're using AI systems, looking at radiology slides, and they are diagnosing cancer tumors and other things. We have that going on in the Munson healthcare system already. So we're already seeing that. Also, the other technology advance in medical healthcare technology is computers. We are vastly connected. Everything is connected. Everything leads back to a patient's electronic medical record. So all of our systems are becoming more and more integrated with computer systems. And we are handling those computer systems along with everything else that we're utilizing. We handshake it off to the regular IT at the hospital. But up until then, if a patient is connected to it, it's going through our systems first. So technology, as I state, is now. Where might you work? Opportunities are vast in biomed. Obviously, the hospitals. That's number one, bread and butter. Secondly, is getting in with manufacturers. Working for all the manufacturers, all of them have tech support, service centers, regional service reps, clinicians that go out, that teach people how to use the equipment. Biomed's are all involved in that also. So there's opportunities there. There's also opportunities working for third-party companies, independent companies, that either contract with a hospital or are just called in to service. And then you have, like I have myself, I have my own business also, where I take care of some of the local veterinarian clinics, which is vastly underserved throughout the country. And the newest addition to that is dental technicians, vastly underserved across the country also. And that is a new program that's been introduced nationally. So that is yet another avenue. And then finally, there are opportunities for people to do nonprofit work, going out to Doctors Without Borders, the mercy ships around the world. I actually have a student who's very interested in doing that currently. So, there are many, many opportunities. Now the numbers. Quick, down, and dirty. 60,000-plus biomed's are expected to be leaving the career field in the next 10 years. The majority of those are due to retirement. Scarily, I realized that myself this past January when I was doing a presentation for an event and realized, I'm in that number now. So that was kind of unnerving. In that same timeframe, the amount of students being produced by this number of schools that are across the country that offer biomed programs is 4,000 in that same time period. So as the numbers don't add up, jobs are plenty. We need more students. And I just found out two weeks ago, since COVID, before COVID, we did a national outreach and we calculated the numbers of schools across the country, and we were at about 82 schools offering biomed programs out of all the colleges in the United States. As of two weeks ago, we're down to 52. In Michigan, we're one of two. The other one is Schoolcraft, and their numbers have been going down too. So that needs to change. It's a great opportunity for those that may want to get into healthcare but really don't want that hands-on, patient-first event that they get into. This is a great opportunity. Healthcare is going nowhere, except up. Next 30 years, they're projecting healthcare to grow between 25% to 30%. So the need is going to be more. Munson alone, we've got two ambulatory surgical centers opening up before the end of the year. We just opened up a new massive clinic in Petoskey, and now they just announced in a whole new maternity NICU that they're going to be building. We're going to need people. Despite what finance says at Munson, we're going to need people to handle that medical equipment, so. As far as our education goes and looking at it and the outreach that I do, and that is mostly why I won this award, was my outreach in the region. I've gone from anywhere from Luddington to Gaylord, recruiting high school students, elementary students, middle school students, talking to people who want to cross-drain into a new career and whatever. It is the ultimate STEM job. We embody everything that STEM represents. So the nice thing about it is it's an associate's degree. So as we know, somebody that is living in Grand Travis County, they could have their whole degree paid for, and we can find them a job. So that's a wonderful opportunity for someone. Worldwide opportunities like I brought up and working on cutting-edge technology of the day. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, before we get to questions, we are going to get to questions. Will you just do one more slide? I would like you to just advance one more for us, please.
One more?
Which is that, which, before we get into...
Nice, Lynn.
I do want to say, we're very proud of you, Joe, and I know you're very humble about this, but it is a big deal. And I hope you display that award broadly, because we're very proud to have you here.
I've asked if there's a, if we have a trophy or award display case here in the center, I'd be happy to donate it for a little while if we do have someplace that we could put it.
Yeah.
Instead of sitting at my house, you know?
We'll find a spot. Thank you. So let's move to questions, because this is...
I hear from the medical community that we really need more biomedical technicians. What can NMC do to increase the number of students and student graduates who can meet the local needs?
The biggest thing is we're getting out there. And if we had the backing and knowledge and information going out like we do with the maritime and aviation for biomed, I'm sure we could be increasing the numbers on it. Because everybody that I talk to that wants to get into a new career comes into, that I talk to at high school events, are like, I've never heard of this. Why haven't I never heard of this? I'd like to be in healthcare, but I don't want to be messing with blood and poop and vomit and everything else. They don't want to do that, but they want to be in the healthcare realm, because, you know, it's a great, it's a great career place to be. But that's the thing, is getting the word out there that we are a legitimate career and, you know, get us off that list. That's the biggest thing.
Thank you. I'm going to go in order. It seems like we all have some questions. So Ken?
Yeah, I have to say, this is very interesting.
Thank you.
I just, a note of skepticism, okay? I'm an economist by training. So I've kind of come to the belief many years ago that if there is a demand for jobs for employees, then you will find people moving in that direction. What's the problem here? I mean, you're showing us a decrease in graduates, a decrease in schools, and an apparent demand for employees. It would suggest that people should be flocking towards this.
Yes, absolutely.
Is the pay, are people underpaid? Or what's the problem? And you can't just say it's not known. I understand that is a problem.
Right. The average starting pay with an associate's degree is about $44,000, $45,000 a year. Full benefits, working full-time for a hospital or a company, retirement, you know, everything that comes with that. You're working in a hospital. Basically, you get in, you really got to screw up to get out. So it's stable. It honestly, that's, no one's ever heard of what we do. Everybody's heard of biomedical engineering, some kind of engineering. That's part of the problem that we're working on with our national body, governing body, is changing our name, getting engineering out of it. But then the Department of Labor does us no favors. The name that they have attached to us has been in place since 1970s, when biomed became a viable field. And they call us medical equipment repairers. So if anybody's looking up anything for biomed, they're not going to find anything if they're going by the Department of Labor. The other issue we have is high schools, the counselors, and I've talked to our regional counselors group, advising committees. They need to stop pushing university. We know as a community college, the things that we offer, not all of them need to go to university to make good money. And that's what kids think of first. That's what parents want for their kids, is to make good money. Well, we know that, that they don't need to do that in today's day and age. It had its place and time in the 80s and in the 90s. Now, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need construction, we need auto mechanics, we need biomed's. Again, it comes back to, nobody's ever heard of us.
What's the upward potential for somebody to earn?
We have generally, across the country, is, it's a three-tiered system. BMET 1, 2, and 3. Then generally, hospitals will promote from within, usually if they have a viable candidate, to transfer into radiology. Radiology is more specific group, more specific group of skill sets. Go to specific training for what you have. Those people then can cut service contracts on those pieces of equipment. And when I'm talking service contracts on a CT unit, we're talking $200,000 a year per unit. And if you can send out somebody to a $90,000 school to get trained to repair that thing, and you can cut $200,000 per year, it's well worth it. That's also a three-tiered system, and then there's management, of course. So, yeah, this, I mean, you can go up indefinitely. You get into the radiology realm, you're definitely six figures. And this is all still with an associate's degree. Now, what I tell people when they, especially parents, when they ask me, well, it's an associate's degree. What can I do? I mean, is that really something my kid can get a job with? Yes, it is. Because if you think about it, Munson has over 10,000, or we have 20,000, 24,000 pieces of individual equipment at Munson proper. Of those are probably 800 to 900 specific, different types of equipment that we need to learn about. I can't teach that in two years, let alone the two semesters I have. So.
I'm going to keep moving on till we have a few more questions. Mark, you're...
I'm all set. He still might...
I think Ken might have hit a few of us with that question. Got you.
Actually, that was one of mine too. But can you talk about your relationship with the Career Tech Center in town, the ISD?
I have tried to reach out to the Career Tech Center. I'm friends with some spouses of people that are there. Tim Vandermeulen is a big one. And usually, we say, yep, yep, we got to get together and everything. And then I say, send me some dates when you want me to come in, and I hear nothing. On the contrary, CNET down in Cadillac has been very warm and receptive, and I have two new students from there this year. So they have been very much enamored by it and understand what it means, and their students understand it. So I'm still trying. I'm not giving up, but I'm trying to get into the Career Center. If anybody has any nudge there, I'd appreciate it, because I'd be there in a heartbeat, so. But I've gone to the high schools here, Greenspire included. So definitely getting out there and trying to get the word out.
Yeah. Well, keep up that hard work. We appreciate what you are doing for this part of our education for students, and it sounds really important. We'll do what we can to continue to support you. And congratulations again on that award. That is really impressive. Thank you for being here, Joe. Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Any more questions? Because I'm going to get home. I worked all day at Munson, so.
Well, thank you again for being here. We appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and at this point, we are at public input. I don't believe we have any public input. And so now let's move into our updates. And President Nusli, we appreciate hearing from you.
Okay, four key things this evening. One, to build on that recognition or celebration that we just shared regarding Joe's award of the Biomedical Equipment Technician of the Year. I'll share one other. Laura Stevens, you know, our director of the EASE programs, just found out that she's been awarded by the LEARN organization, L-E-R-N. It's an acronym. It's the world's largest association for continuing education. Laura has been awarded one of the top 20 educators in the country for continuing education, so.
Congratulations, Joe.
So in addition to that great award that Joe got, also some recognition for Laura. And I'll also share, fresh from last night, Wayne Moody, who heads our automotive program, shared with us that the Backwoods Baja, if you remember, there's a winter baja up at Michigan Tech. The Backwoods Baja is... at Michigan Tech. The Backwoods Baja is in Wisconsin. That was this weekend. It's where the students have essentially built vehicles to run in that race, and then they maintain it throughout the race. It's a very high-tech endurance kind of race. And at the end of that, we had two entries, and we came in both third and sixth place out of thirty-six entries. And nearly all the others are university, four-year universities. So real proud of the work that Wayne has done with the automotive students. But switching gears, but also a little bit of acknowledgement is to acknowledge the work of Carrie Noga and also Todd Nybauer, who've been working really hard on our Ready for Life partnership. And we've shared some updates with you over the last couple of years about our commitment to serve our region's families with children of intellectual and developmental disabilities. And this is fresh in mind because this last Friday, we had prospective students and their parents here for a campus visit day and Q and A. And it was great to see so many students and families show up. In other words, there is definitely a demand for this. And it was also incredibly moving to see the great appreciation for parents who aren't finding service elsewhere in the community and are grateful that we're considering this. And the work that Carrie has done over the last couple of years would essentially position NMC to be the first community college in the state of Michigan to offer programming for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Right now, we're targeting fall of twenty-six. And again, Todd's working with Carrie to figure out how do we operationalize that. I think she's done a lot of the work that's got us to this point with this partnership with Ready for Life. To remind you, that partnership, Ready for Life, already is on campuses here in Michigan. Not two-year campuses, but they do have a program at Hope College and at Ferris. So we're going to be another one of their partners. I would just lastly add specifically to, to give some recognition for Carrie. She's really been at this the last few years. And it's been a, a work of passion for her. It began with a foundation innovation grant. She worked with oops for a duration, getting essentially great mentorship there. But she's reached out to a tremendous amount of organizations and stakeholders like Brickways, like the Disability Network of Northern Michigan, Grand Traverse Industries, Northwest Ed, and their transition campus, let alone numerous local parents. And two things that I'm really impressed with is she also enrolled in an NMC project management class to help her better advocate for this and learn project management. And I think it really speaks to her passion of wanting to get this across the finish line. And as I said, most importantly, she's had focus group with parents, most recently a group of forty-two parents who, again, aren't getting service out there in the community. And she's trying to link them to the college. She's also visited Ferris and learned a lot from their program. And if you recall, we did an on-campus pilot back in the summer of twenty-three, which provided a lot of learning. And that learning helped us understand that we weren't equipped to do on-campus residence, but we were equipped to do commuter program. So that's what we've homed in on, that we hope to do that pilot starting next fall. So I just share that with you, one, to update, but also to provide that recognition for the work that Carrie's done and the partnering that she's done with Todd. Thirdly, an update regarding the foundation, the campaign feasibility study. As you know, we're working with the Winkler Group. They have shared a draft report with the Foundation Executive Committee, and later this week, we'll be reviewing it with the Foundation Board. What I can share with you is they've conducted over fifty-three interviews, one-on-one, face-to-face interviews with key supporters. They've also complemented that with two hundred forty-two surveys. So we feel like we've got a really good span of conversations that were had. And essentially, they're recommending that we move ahead. In terms of campaign readiness, they look at four things. And obviously, we've scored high enough on those four things that they've said, yes, we unequivocally say that you should be moving ahead. Those four things are, one, do we have compelling priorities? They've said absolutely. The things that we presented in the prospectus to those supporters, they've definitely given us the feedback that, yes, these are priorities that we would support. The second of those four is regarding the perception of the college and leadership, which includes this board, includes the Foundation Board, includes myself, all of the team. And we rate it extremely high on that. So again, donors are saying, we appreciate NMC, we trust NMC, and we want to support the college. The third, which is probably the most critical, is their willingness to invest. Those interviews weren't formal solicitations, but it was to gauge what is the community's willingness to invest. And indeed, there is a willingness. And fourthly, linked to that is their willingness to volunteer, because we would need chairs and co-chairs and a volunteer structure to, to implement. So after this week, when the Foundation Board discusses that report with the Winkler Group, they will come back in December and have a deeper conversation. I think this week is really more about them listening. But in December, they'll have a broader discussion. And in February, vote and make a decision. So I can't tell you that they're going to, you know, what they're going to do in advance, but I can tell you the Winkler Group is recommending that we move ahead. The Foundation Board will have that conversation in February, which means it'll probably come to us in March. So trying to keep you up to date on what's going on there. And I think Catherine and I are both really excited by the energy and the quality of engagement that Winkler has brought to the process. And the last thing I'd say is just a big thank you to the board for a few things. But one, the IAF Gala, I know many of you attended the Gala this week. And as you well know before coming to that, but I know in leaving it, you probably go, wow, what a distinctive program, something that really sets us apart that no other community college in the state of Michigan has. But also, I think it reinforces our brand of being that community cornerstone, when you hear how important that program is to our wider community. And also how it connects to our vision of wanting to make sure that we're serving our community and helping them and us grow as global citizens. So thank you for your engagement with that. But I also have to say thanks for a few other things. I know leading into this meeting today, there were trustees out there helping with the food pantry, loading up, helping make sure our students who are food insecure have the food they need. And also, I know later this week, many people are going to be attending ACCT. And again, growing your knowledge about not just NMC, but community colleges and how we rise up even higher. So thank you for those things.
Wow. Excellent update. Questions, comments of President Nusli?
I would like to say, related to Carrie's efforts, if you could please pass along how grateful we are for bringing this to our community college, being one of the first in the state, her passion. But also, that seems like as we're, we look to support that part of our community, that maybe that someday is an MCCA or an ACCT podium story, a model of how you can bring it to other colleges, help other communities support that as well. So get her to the podium sometime. Okay, with that, I'll move into my update. My update is rather brief, just a few things. First, I would like to just make sure we are all, you've seen some of these notes, but I just want to bring it to life related to the RFP for Boardman Lake Campus and this process that we're going through. Just a quick update on the timeline is that this was discussed again at Building and Site Committee that is chaired by Trustee Weaver. And we discussed, as you saw in the notes, the, a bit of the process for that RFP. And, and there was a suggestion made, if you saw that in the notes, that we did one final tweak to the RFP where we took the word master out in front of the word lease. That has been updated on our website as best we can get it out there. So we've had one final minor change to the RFP process. It is out there. The people that have identified interest in that campus to us have seen that RFP and have it in their hands, as well as any, anyone else that sees that. These are due back to us on February first. So put us in a little bit of a timeframe reminder. We had said in the RFP that we'd like forty-five to sixty days after February first to go through our review process, which that process is still yet to be defined. And it's going to be brought to our Building and Site Committee first with the direction from Cunningham Lim, who has experience in this area. That, that process will be confirmed and recommended to us by our Building and Site Committee. So just reminding you of how we work through these sort of things. That puts us maybe to end of March, early April, where we're going through, we're executing that process that's been determined, and we're going through those proposals. So beyond that, I can't really dictate what's going to happen from there. But I just want to make sure you all have that quick summary, because it's been in many different areas of notes. So. And then second, I just want to remind us again on some dates that coming up in, well, on October twenty-first, which is tomorrow, we will, we will have Nick's self-evaluation as well as our evaluation form to do on our own for Nick's annual review. We have, we'll have a specified time to do that. And then in our November meeting, we'll have a closed session, and we will go through that evaluation. And then the final area is I just want to say, safe travels. And thank you, all of you who are going to New Orleans for our ACCT conference. I'm sorry I can't join you there. But I know you are going to learn an incredible amount, and I look forward to hearing about what we learn and take away from that. So thank you all for giving your time there. Are there any questions of me? Comments, questions? Okay. Now, can I add you, Trustee Weaver was able to attend our MCCA board meeting in place of Trustee Horn, who is our primary contact representative for MCCA. And you wanted to just summarize what was talked about at that. Thank you.
Nick and I both attended the MCCA meeting at Kellogg Community College in Battle Creek. The present for the next year, maybe eighteen months, is we're going to continue pretty much as we have. But there are some really scary things out there in the future. One of them is a potential clawback of Pell Grants, depending on the performance of our alumni. And some of these things are really kind of scary. And the speakers basically outlined what you've all seen, you've got written materials on this MCCA. And then they said, but we don't know what's going to happen, because it all depends on how they enforce it, what the regulations are. And so far as we know, nobody's even started drafting those yet. So it's out there, but it's got to be eighteen months before we even know what it looks like. Nick, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just say it's, you know, that's just one of many policy things coming particularly from the federal government that we're having to monitor on a daily basis and try to respond to.
Thank you for that update and for attending. We're now moving to our consent items. May I have a motion to approve those consent items, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And support?
I'll support.
Thank you. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And those items pass. Now, moving into our action items, we have a few of them. I'm not going to read off the letters. We, we doubled up on our Vs. But, so I'll just read the, the area, and then we will move into closed session and then back into regular session. So may I have a motion for acceptance of the NMC audit?
All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And any discussion on that audit? Great. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that passes. And now, may I please have a motion to approve our fiscal year twenty-seven five-year capital outlay plan that will be submitted to Michigan Office of the State Budget as it was presented to us?
So moved.
Thank you. And a support?
Support.
Thank you. And any discussion on that?
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Same question I asked last year about it. The five-year capital outlay plan, each year gets added to it, what we think we're going to do next.
Yeah.
And often, it still has things we're planning to do in two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Have we taken those stale things out yet?
I was even thinking I could answer that, Troy, because you, you have been consistent in asking that.
So we leave a lot of the history in there, because we think it's, it's helpful in understanding the, how the program was there. I mean, a good example of that is the Great Lakes Maritime Academy. We describe how it was created. Its uniqueness in being a four-year program at a community college. So I, we looked through, I think, pretty in-depth and felt that that was relevant information.
Maybe that's something AI could clean up.
All right. We expect you to ask that again next year. Thank you, Troy. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And the outlay plan, capital outlay plan passes. And may I have a motion to have approval of our Denny's Museum Center strategic plan that will be provided in the application to the American Alliance of Museums in October of twenty-six? Thank you. And thank you. And any discussion on that strategic plan? I will say Dr. Headley that that, you're not, I hope you're not tired of hearing doctor yet. But it was a very impressive plan. Appreciate you and your team's work on that. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that passes. And may I have a motion for administration to submit application for the two percent grant from the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians?
So moved.
Thank you. And support? Thank you. And any discussion or questions on that? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that passes. Okay. May I have a motion for Foundation Fundraising and Accounting Software Renewal, Blackbaud, that the administration enter into this contract? It is a three-year contract with Blackbaud at the total cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars over that three-year period. This is funded, the expense is funded equally by the college's general fund and the foundation's operating budget. I have a motion for that.
I'll move.
Thank you. And support by Trustee Horn? And any discussion on that? Yeah.
I just have a question. This is a big chunk of money. And it's a software package and accounting software package. I don't know, Catherine or somebody else can perhaps explain to us why we need something at this level of expense?
Well, it's served us well over, over the years. It's robust software that allows us to do all the reporting and financial accounting that we need to. So from our perspective, there wasn't a huge driver to make a change. I think if you look comparatively to other robust pieces of software, that you'd see pretty equal pricing.
That was my question, really. This is comparable.
And, yeah, based on what I've seen out there.
I think Catherine's saying, and I don't know if she wants to add something.
It sounds like you had your question answered, Ken. But I'll just add a little bit more context. Our Razor's Edge database houses more than a hundred and eighty-seven thousand records of our donors, community partners, and our alumni as well. And so as we're looking ahead to the seventy-fifth anniversary, we don't think any type of software migration would be prudent at this point in time. As Troy mentioned, it has served us well, both on the foundation team and the financial team as well.
Thank you, Catherine.
Oh, we have another question.
Yes, since this would cover, should there be a campaign, this would cover that time period, do you feel this is adequate to support a major campaign?
Oh, yes, absolutely. This is top tier in the industry, and something extraordinarily special would have to come along. along to outpace Razor's Edge. Yeah, thank you.
Bringing this up to add is a future point for us. Because this expense is funded by both the college and the foundation operating budget equally, I would like to have a discussion with the board at some point to learn, to understand better how we're splitting not just this expense, but expenses from the foundation into the organization in any different area, just so we have a better understanding of that whole process.
I can do that in the future, but I would just say, in general, there's a 50-50 split.
Understand that, but more of a, we see a lot of points where things are brought in from the foundation to fund things, like understand, not so much the splitting, but more of what's brought in and why and how it's done.
I may follow up with you further on that, to be specific, rather than taking the time now, but we will follow up on it, and I think I need a little bit more detail from you on what you're looking for. Okay, thank you, Andy. And Mark, did you have a question? Okay, great. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great, and that passes. And am I pronouncing this right? The Valo, Valu, Valau property in Mayfield? How's that? May I have a motion, you read through the detail of this property, for administration to convey without consideration the college's interests to the state through quitclaim deed for this property?
All right, so moved.
Thank you. And a support?
Support.
Thank you. And any discussion or questions about this?
Yeah, I think we should explain that this land was gifted to the college some time ago, back before we had standards on what kinds of gifts we'd accept. And it has title problems. And the title problem is the cost of litigation probably would equal or exceed the value of the property by the time you got done. And we might not even win. It just doesn't make sense for us to pursue that. Your DNR wants it. I think we should give it to them.
And I do not disagree with any of that. Also, giving some comfort to the background of this, this was thoroughly vetted at the Building and Site Committee, and we all unanimously agree that it should be brought forward to the board for the board's approval of this as well. Any other questions? Great. Well, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Great. And a motion, may I have a motion to recommend authorization for administration to enter into a contract with People Driven Technologies that's in the amount of $52,723 to renew the maintenance and licensing for the college's wireless infrastructure, equipment, and management May I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Thank you. And a support?
Support.
Thank you. And any questions on that discussion?
What period does this cover? What period of time?
I cannot answer. The question is, what period of time is?
The next year.
The next year, okay. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that passes. And now, may I look to you, Lynn, for some help with the roll call vote to close the regular session? And first, excuse me, don't go into that vote. May I have a motion to close the regular session? Move into closed.
So moved.
Thank you. And a support?
Support.
Thank you. And now, Lynn, may I have a roll call vote for that?
Yes. I just clarified, this is.
Thank you.
For the privileged legal.
Privileged legal memo by our legal counsel is the reason for the closed session. Thank you.
Jody, one of us?
Yes.
Mark, really?
Yes.
Ted Warner?
Yes.
Pam Horne?
Yes.
Andy Rupichak?
Yes.
Ken Weaver?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so give us a minute. We'll regroup the room and come back into regular session in a moment.
I forgot the question.
I know. I.